To the October 20th, 2025 School Board Meeting of the Conestoga Valley School District. If you would please stand for the pledge.
United States of America, a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, can we have attendance, please? We have six school directors present in person tonight. Ms. Trowbridge is present online. Mr. Hurst and Mrs. Groff are absent tonight. We have a quorum in place. Alright, can I have an approval of the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we're gonna move on to board commendations. Alright, congratulations to the CV High School golfers, Thomas and Andrew Kalinsky, for qualifying in the PIA double A state championships on October 19th to the 21st. CV held its annual community bonfire on the 15th. Thank you to everyone who attended and a big shout out to CV High School Assistant Principal Ashley Johnston and our entire facilities department for all their hard work leading up to and during the event. Congratulations to Fritz's facility dog Muffin on graduating with a service dog certificate through the UDS Foundation. And there's a link there, if you click it, you'll be able to see their little attention piece, I guess you could say. Congratulations to Jared Husken Middle School eighth grader Kale Smith, who was selected to be an honorary page for the day earlier this month. Mensor selected him and spent time showing him the political process. Superintendent's comments.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Before I get started with my comments, I just want to make note, as you've probably seen, we're minus our fearless leader tonight. Board President Idette Groff couldn't be with us, so we're gonna try our best to get through the meeting without her leadership, so we'll get through it, but appreciate everybody's patience. I wanted to piggyback on one of the board commendations, for Muffin, obviously. But if you didn't check out that clip, it is really, really cute. But did want to give a special shout out to Ashley Johnston, Assistant Principal at the high school. She's been sort of the lead the last couple of years on coordinating the bonfire. Unless you're involved in planning it, you really don't know the amount of work that goes into coordinating an event that big, and she always does a great job of it. So I also wanted to give my thanks to Ashley. So other than that, my only other item tonight is I'm really excited and pleased to introduce Ms. Amy Hurst as our recommended candidate for the Director of Human Resources position in the district. So Amy has worked for Conestoga Valley in various roles since 2019, most recently as a Human Resources Generalist, a role she has had since 2023. She is a CV resident and parent, and also serves on the Board of Trustees for the Conestoga Valley Education Foundation. Amy has a bachelor's degree from Vanderbilt University, a master's of education from Marymount University, and is currently completing a master's certificate in human resources and employee relations from Penn State. Most importantly, today is her birthday. So, big day for Amy. Congratulations, Amy, and welcome.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Are there any board comments on district activity?
Yes, I have one.
Any board comments on district activity?
I have one.
It's a delay.
So Brown Town held their first ever international event night.
Was Brown Town held their first ever international?
And it was awesome. We had 20 families represent the country that they are originally from there, so we had like, well, actually, I think it was 20 countries were represented. I'm not sure how many different families. But they set up tables, they made their own food for a culture experience, they had video presentations, they dressed up in their cultural wear, and it was so much fun. And a lot of the community at Brownstown turned out, and I told Mr. Ludwig that he should probably start this, or get it started at the elementary, other elementary schools, because it was really good.
Yeah, I was at Brownstown the day, I wasn't able to make it that evening, but I went to Brownstown the next day, and that's all people were talking about there.
I just wanted to piggyback off the bonfire night, that was a really well-attended, really fun event, so definitely thanks for everybody and all the students who were manning all the tables, and I'd love to know how many smoothies were made. That seemed to be a pretty popular item at $4 a pop, I knew it cost me a pretty penny. And then also for the homecoming game, shout out to the football team for staying undefeated. That was one of the most exciting 55 seconds of a game I think I've ever seen, and most people said that, that was pretty crazy. You know, nobody wants to lose their game homecoming night, and they didn't, which was pretty cool, so shout out to those guys, I know they were really excited.
Alright, any correspondence from the secretary?
I'm working on it.
Alright, so we're moving along to the presentations. Dr. Coser and Dr. Mann.
And we are happy to bring along Dr. Galbraith with us this evening. This is her first presentation around curriculum. Dr. Mann and I will be doing most of this presentation, because these courses were completed prior to Kelly arriving, but we wanted her here to be able to follow up on questions and any other information the board might need. So we are getting on a cycle of fall courses and curriculum to bring to the board. We wanted to do a quick refresher on the project that we've been implementing in the district over the past couple of years, and then we'll kind of set you up for the courses that you have to review and the timeline and process that we'll go through. So two key pieces as we look at why we're making these curriculum revisions. Our mission and our vision are some of the two components that really guide the work that we're doing in the district. You can see in both the mission and the vision, the emphasis on learning innovation, the emphasis on rigorous learning activities. Those two statements really speak to the heart of the curriculum redesign project that we've been under over the past couple of years. In addition to that, our next slide shows us our comprehensive plan goal. You know that we are living and planning and implementing our comprehensive plan, and so this comes right out of the learner well-being, achievement, and belonging goal, specifically focusing in on English, math, science, and social studies. Last year, you reviewed and approved the English and math courses in curriculum. This year, this fall, you're gonna see the social studies. Science will be coming later on this school year, so we are right on target for meeting our comprehensive plan goal and timeline with this curriculum work. So again, just setting up and being really clear on what we mean by curriculum. We've talked before about the difference between curriculum and instructional resources. Curriculum is the state standards mapped out by subject in units of study so that it's really clear how we're addressing each of those state standards throughout a student's experience in CV. Remember that a curriculum is not the textbook. The textbook goes over in the instructional resources side of this chart, so that would be a different process, a different set of expectations. The curriculum is purely the course of study as it's laid out by those content standards, sequenced in a way that makes the most sense for our students and for our learners. So again, coming back to what our board policy says about curriculum, three of our main policies that guide this work, Policy 105, really outlines, again, what curriculum is. It's designed for our students. We in Conestoga Valley review our curriculum on a continuous basis. We are regularly reviewing even the math and ELA that you approved last year. Every year, we're looking at those units and we're continuing to make adjustments as necessary. 106 then takes that curriculum and it says, okay, how do we create the in-depth detailed units that our teachers use to actually create their lesson plans? And so those are developed by the superintendent, the admin team, with staff participation. That's really, as you know, where we spend a lot of our ESR funds, working with small teams of teachers to develop those guides for planned instruction. And then that component of adopting the planned instruction, again, that's where the policy talks about all of our planned courses being approved by the board, so that's what you're looking at this evening. And so that last piece, you know, that drives the work of what we're doing, we've been talking about this project as the modern learning curriculum redesign, this is our opportunity to take that profile of a CV learner and make sure that it's embedded into every single unit, every classroom, every lesson that we're working on across the district, and that really has been the emphasis of putting our time and effort into the redesign, is looking at that standards-based curriculum through the lens of the profile of the CV learner. That's the biggest change that you'll see in the courses that are uploaded for you this evening. So Don's gonna take it from here, a lot of the courses are secondary and are coming out of the middle school and high schools, so he'll walk you through the specifics and the logistics of what's in the board docs for you to review.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. Just to review and make sure that we understand what the framework that we're using, it's called understanding by design. I went back earlier to check when that actually came out, it actually came out in 1998, and we've been using it here at Conestoga Valley since 2005. So it's a framework that we're fairly familiar with. Now, like anything else, it changes over time and adapts to the current structures and things like that, and we've done that in this process when we look at what we are calling the modern curriculum. And as Dr. Coser just said, with the profile of a CV learner and instructional model, weaving those pieces into this process. So understanding by design has three main components, you have your desired results, as Dr. Coser mentioned, at your standards that then are wrapped around, things, call them understandings, enduring understandings, you know, those big items, the skills, the knowledge that you want your students to know and learn, and that's the piece that you approve. And so later tonight, when you get to look at the units of study and the courses, it's that stage one, the desired results. Stage two in understanding by design is looking at what's the evidence that is acceptable for your students, so you know, as educators, what evidence do we want them to be able to demonstrate to us that they've learned those desired results? And then stage three is that learning plan. You know, as Dr. Coser indicated, and putting together that instructional model, and then also the policy that guides that, the learning plan is, you know, how are we going to be instructing our students? What resources are used and so forth? It's a step right above what you would traditionally call the lesson plan. So there are three main components when you're thinking about understanding by design, I just wanted to remind you of those things. Last year, as Dr. Coser indicated, these are the courses that we brought to you in phase one in the process. Phase two, this fall, we're bringing to you a number of courses, as we indicated, social studies, there are the courses listed there. And we're bringing them tonight, and we're looking between now and November 10th to address any questions that you may have or clarifications that you may have, so that when we get here on November 10th, we can get, go for approval, if that makes sense. And then here, also in phase two, the departments, actually, we're part of phase one at the high school, obviously, there's a lot of courses, so it's gonna continue on for a while to make our way through all the departments and all the various levels of courses and the various electives and so forth that you'll find at a high school level. And so here you'll see ELA and math again, from phase one departments, but here as part of phase two. And then finally, come And then finally, coming up, we have science that we've been working on, and as you are aware, the new steel standards just came out, and has been a pretty heavy lift for our departments and our teachers to get through that, to make sure that we're having that appropriate transition and so forth in the science area. So hopefully this spring, but I don't, and just being honest, it may be a little longer than that, just because we want to make sure it's done right. And then also phase three, which is coming up, would be the next departments. And these are the departments that are slated to start, and that's where we'll be working with Kelly and trying to figure out what's the best approach to doing this. You don't want to take on too much, and then, you know, you become overwhelmed, but phase three would bring, should be bringing the rest of the departments online to begin this process, and that'll take a number, a couple of years until we work our way through all their courses.
So our goal this evening is to just review those big, high-level ideas around curriculum, present to you those courses, so you have all of the courses listed there, the units that are involved. It gives us three weeks for review, opportunity to take a look at it, send us any questions, and then we will come and publicly present and answer those questions on November 10th. But tonight was really the preview phase, put some of those reminders out there for the board, and then make sure that you have ample time to review and dive into those courses. Any questions this evening?
When it comes to the electives, like some of the, how are the, how do they fit into this review process? Because they, or do they all somehow align with one of the core four? Or do, like, just that process? I never thought about that until you mentioned, and I was like, oh yeah, how are those?
Yeah, you'll see some of the English and the math, you'll see these just keep spiraling through because it will take us, we take another batch every year until we're through all the English department, all the math department, all the elective. So we, what we tried to do was start with that really core Algebra I, English I, those initial high school courses, and now you're going to see us keep adding on until eventually the entire high school course selection guide will have gone through this process.
Yeah, because you see, like, the yearbook is an example of, you know, of those courses.
You can also imagine that there are teachers who are teaching multiple courses. So there could be a teacher who would be teaching perhaps five different preps, some elective, some main courses. So it would be very difficult for that teacher to write all of them at the same time. So there's a staggered, staggered phases for bringing them to you.
For sure. Yeah, that would make sense.
Okay. I just have a general question. Like, elementary really pushed books and reading, and I see, like, English and American literature for the high school level, they have whole books. But are we looking at that more for the middle school? Because to get them reading a whole entire book versus snippets, and I know we're dealing with middle schoolers and attention spans, but I think it's kind of a lost couple of years to keep them engaged in this is a whole book and how are you going to pull out what you need for reports and whatnot. I just, I didn't see that with middle school. I don't know if it has yet to be really looked at with English, but I want to make sure they have a whole book to read.
Novel versus short text.
Yeah, or excerpts. I'm not, I mean, Shakespeare, nobody really, unless you love it, it's a love-hate relationship with things like that, but that's high school level. But like little snippets, that stuff could be introduced, but they should have a whole book to read.
Yeah. Yeah, and various courses, they have novels that they're looking at and reading through the approved list, you know, to get beyond just that little piece of it.
Yeah. Okay. Other questions, comments? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add a comment to close? Just as a reminder to the board, Dr. Kozier sort of hit on this, but if you have questions, the earlier you can get those to us, so we can have a really deep discussion in November, that would be, that would be great. Believe it or not, you know, as much of work as these three do, they're not the ones that are always sitting down putting pen to paper when it comes to curriculum writing. It's really teacher-driven. So if there's specific questions about why maybe a certain text was selected over another one, we might need to go back to the teams to get answers from them on certain aspects, why, you know, why a learning target was written a certain way versus, you know, another way. So that, depending, if we get those questions from you guys early, that'll give us the opportunity to maybe bring to the table individuals, like department chairs and other teacher leaders who are involved in the curriculum writing process. If they need to, if we need to bring them in November, we can bring them or just get answers for them. So just a reminder.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comments specific to the agenda this evening? All right. Any comments from CVEA? All right. Comments from other employee groups? All right. So we are moving to the consent agenda. I would need a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through M.
Motion to approve the consent agenda items A through M.
Second. Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Mrs. Kapka?
Aye.
Mr. Genzel?
Aye.
Mr. Eby?
Aye.
Kathy's not online.
Kathy, Kathy is no longer online.
No longer online?
No. So 6-0, motion passed.
All right. Moving on to the action discussion agenda. On here is approval to request to waive the rental fee. I guess we're opening this up for discussion.
So this was discussed last week. It was the CVA, Conestoga Valley Education Association's request to waive the rental fee for the facilities usage of Smoketown Elementary School auditorium tomorrow evening for school board candidate forum. So I know there were some questions that came up from that, so we decided we would move it to action discussion instead of putting on the consent to follow up. We do have Mr. Richards from CVA president here, if there's specific questions about the forum. I will clarify, we clarified this with President Groff today, and Adele's here as well to answer any questions. Little misinformation provided last week. The date that was given as the submission for the request was actually not the correct date. The original facilities usage request was September 17th, according to the application that was submitted. The date that was quoted last week was the date of when the CVEA emailed requesting to waiver of the fee. So the 30-day, 30-day advance notice that's in school policy wasn't here till. So that was a mistake on our end, and I apologize for that, any confusion around that. But I know there were some other questions as well, so we do have representatives from CVEA here, and Adele, who handles facilities requests, and myself, if there are any specific questions.
I know I had, and I missed the meeting last week, so I was getting caught up a little bit on that. CVEA is hosting, organizing, running the event. Is that, I think that's got the gist. You don't, you can even just stand up, Tom, it's fine, it's up to you.
So we're not really sponsoring it per se because we're not making any endorsements.
Sure.
We're providing an opportunity after hearing from members in the community and seeing that other communities do similar events, we wanted to provide an opportunity for candidates to address the community and the community to listen to the candidates.
Gotcha.
And we requested a waiver, but regardless, we'll still have the form tomorrow.
Okay, gotcha. And all the candidates that are on the ballot, I'm assuming have all been uniformly addressed and invited or however that works?
So we made contact with both the Langston County Committee as well as the Republican Committee. We asked for help contacting candidates. We had some contact information. Two of the candidates that contacted bounced back, so we're relying on those committees to put us in touch. We did our best going forward. If we do that, we're planning on doing this in the future.
Sure.
Maybe we'll start the process a little sooner so that people don't feel like they're left out of loop. It wasn't intentional to not, we were trying to contact everybody. We did our best.
Yeah. I know for me, I think as long as it's, obviously, it's not a district-sponsored event, and that's been notified, and if it remains bipartisan, then I don't have any issues waiving the fee.
It's up for discussion.
I'm going to abstain from this because I'm kind of involved, so just.
All right. Just part of the debate now.
Yep. Whatever you're comfortable with.
Diana, Diana, I have, I have a form that needs to be completed if you're abstaining.
Yeah, so we ready for motion?
Yeah. Waiting for a motion for the approval to request the waive, waive the rental fee.
Do you need the waiver and the event or just the waiver?
Just for the waiver.
Okay. I move that we waive the rental fee for the use of Smoketown Elementary Auditorium for the CVEA event.
Seven.
Do a roll call.
There should be a roll call.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Mr. Genzel?
Aye.
Mr. Eby?
Aye.
That's 5-0, motion passed.
All right. Moving right along to the information agenda, there's a finance and operations report there, curriculum instruction report. Does anyone have any questions, comments on those? Any federal funds?
Nothing new with federal programs as of now.
Admin policy review?
I'm just about ready to, in the very near future, to contact our policy committee about scheduling our first meeting of the year. So look forward to that, Diana and Julie.
It's always fun. Board reports, there's the IU report, PSBA, Langston County Academy, Phil is not here for the CTC report, construction team update, is there? Anyone, any questions about those?
The old is looking great.
Good. I'll report for myself that there is no vice president's report tonight. Any other reports? Any board initiatives that we want to talk about? Good. All right. The dates you can find for the next meetings in November are in board docs. And this is the last opportunity for public comments, for anything outside of the agenda as well. Good? Okay. All right. Then it is a record. Okay. So we're going to adjourn to executive session for personnel reasons.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are they banging the Capitol?